First up, we need approval of our agenda. Can I have a motion and support? Motion by Walls, support by Pulaski. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. We'll move next to item three, public comment. Is there any public? Oh, we have a public. We haven't had one in a couple of weeks.
Good morning. I'm Sarah Lightner. I am asking for consideration for Fair Board. There's going to be a vacancy here this month, and with my background as a former county commissioner, former Fair Board member, someone who's invested in agriculture, I'm just asking for consideration to be appointed to that for the next couple of years, and I think that my experiences currently and in the past will be beneficial for the board. And if you guys have any questions, feel free to contact me offline. Other than that, I hope I can get your guys' support. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mike Way. I'm from Livingston Township. I'm here for your support for the Parks Board appointment and the Library Board appointment. I am retired, so I do have the time to put into it. I have been putting into it. I've been on the Parks Board for quite a few years, been the Parks Board Chair for ten, I think. I just recently got appointed to the Library Board. There was a midterm vacancy that got appointed. So I've only been there for a year, but I did retire from the library after seven years. And we have one of the stronger library systems in the state of Michigan, but we still have a few issues we're working on, but looking for your support. Thank you.
Any further public comment? Last call for public comment. Okay, we'll have another one at the end of the meeting. Move on to item four. The minutes from last month's meeting. Need motion and support to approve? Motion by Pulaski, supported by Walls. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Move on to appointments, next item. Okay, we have a few of them today. First up is the Fair Board. Current member is Jim Vittito. Applicant is Sarah Lightner. This term will run till the end of '27. Any nominations from the floor?
Sarah Lightner.
Okay, all in favor of Sarah Lightner indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Thank you, Sarah. You'll be nominated to the full board next week. We move on to Parks and Recreation. We have three. We'll do them one at a time. Janelle Merritt is current member. Janelle Merritt is the applicant. This will be a public member. Okay, any others from the floor? All in favor of Janelle Merritt?
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Second public member currently is Mike Way, and Mike Way has reapplied. Anybody else from the floor? I'll nominate Mike Way. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Third and last public member, current member is Jim Vittito. Jim has not reapplied. Kevin Lavery has applied in his position. Any from the floor?
Nominate Lavery.
Okay, all in favor of Lavery?
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. That will be it for the Parks. We'll move on to Land Bank Authority. We have a vacant position. This is the Construction Representative. Patrick O'Dowd has applied. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Move on to the Library Board of Trustees. Current member is Mike Way. We have two applicants, Mike Way and John Schaefer.
Nominate Mike Way.
Any other nominations? All in favor of Mike Way indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Okay, we have Material Management Planning. We have an elected township official here that has applied for this new position, Charles Woodburn. Any others from the floor?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
Nominate Andrew Grimes, whose application came in.
Andrew Grimes, whose application came in this morning. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have Charles Woodburn and Andrew Grimes. Andrew Grimes has been brought forward. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
If I may. Ultimately, this outcome of this committee and the board's action will need to be approved by two-thirds of the communities in the county. I would ask, because I think those are both Township Supervisors, Andy and the other gentleman, whose name escapes me, I'd just soon put them both on there. There's no reason we can't have both Township Supervisors on there.
We do have two open positions after we go through this list, so...
Yeah, but they don't probably meet the qualification on that, but, you know.
Do we want to leave them open or fill the positions?
Mr. Chair.
We've advertised like three months.
Mr. Chair, may I suggest a nomination of Mr. Woodburn for an at-large seat on this commission?
I'll accept that nomination. All in favor of Mr. Charles Woodburn as an at-large member? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. That leaves, we have an elected city or village official that is still open yet? I think the city is supposed to be sending somebody over. Is that correct?
They've told me they are. I haven't seen a name yet.
Yes, they wait for the mayor to make their recommendation.
So it should be forthcoming. We anticipate our first meeting of the MMP Committee in sometime in January.
Okay, then we'll move on to the final position, Region Two, Planning Representative. Jacob Hurt has applied, and Patrick O'Dowd has applied. Do we have any nominations?
Nominate Jacob Hurt.
Okay, any others? All in favor of Jacob Hurt indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Okay, that'll leave one position open, and it will be for a village or city. We'll hopefully get that filled next month or as soon as the city does their thing. Okay, that's it for nominations. We move, or for appointments, move up to the Clerk's Semi-Annual Report. Is there anybody here from the clerk's office?
Of course, someone is here from the clerk's office, Commissioner. Hi, thank you for having me. It's always a pleasure. Reporting on my semi-annual, as you can tell from the report that I have submitted, our numbers are looking very good for this year. I'm expecting our Circuit Court cases filed to meet the 2023 numbers. I am expecting our abuse neglect cases to also meet our previous year's numbers, which is unfortunate. The only number I'd like to point out is our Circuit Court pleadings, which is 124,152, and the number of pages that we're seeing in our office, which is a significant increase. So just keep those numbers in mind. You can also look at our birth certificate numbers, death certificate numbers, marriage licenses. All of those look very similar. So if you have any questions on our Circuit Court side, I will answer those. If not, I'll move on to our Elections Division. Sure.
Excuse me, Commissioner Pulaski, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Quarter, for being here. So let's, I guess I'm curious about Circuit Court pleadings, because I'm pretty ignorant of that process. But are, aside from commentary about the verboresity of attorneys, aren't most of the pleadings done electronically, more or less? In other words, to record a piece of paper is not incrementally much more busy than normal? You tell me.
Sure. So the process for, in our court, to accept Circuit Court pleadings is via mail, fax, or in person. We do not have an electronic filing system, and therefore, we cannot accept electronic filings. So it is all paper.
And so my response is wow. Is that because there is a prohibition or because we have a technological deficiency of some sort?
The state, and I'll take a peek at our IT Director there. The state is looking to go to an electronic filing system. I would love those bugs to be worked out before our court moves forward with that.
But if it says 124,000 pleadings, that's like motions...
Motions, informations...
Depositions, all this stuff.
Briefs, yes, encompasses all of those.
And 400,000 pages worth?
Yes.
Wowee.
We scan a lot.
I can imagine you keep somebody busy that way. Well, thank you for keeping the wheels of the courts greased and moving.
They're moving slowly.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay, so 2024, we had a large election year. I'm happy to report that we had a safe and secure election in Jackson County. Very proud of the work that we did. As you know, November of 2022, voters passed proposal 22-2, which is early voting, and we conducted that in February, August, and November. Those utilization numbers are significantly different. So we had 0.55% utilized in February and 0.53 utilized in August. We had over 12% utilize it in November, 12%. So what do those numbers look like in terms of people, right? 694 in February, 683 in August, 16,590 in August, November, excuse me. So that is a significant difference. The staff worked extremely hard, worked many, many days, a lot of overtime, 20 to 30 days in a row without a day off. So I would like to commend my staff for working very hard to make sure that Jackson County was successful. We did a lot of outreach in elections. I went to a lot of meetings, talked about early voting a lot at almost every township meeting. I did some events with the chamber, did some events with the college, gave a lot of media interviews, just trying to educate our public on early voting. So any questions on elections? Okay, next is jury. Love talking about jury. So far this year, we've had 30 jury trials. Seventeen of those are Circuit Court trials. Six of those were civil, and 11 were criminal. Thirteen were District Court cases. And then as far as failed to appear and fines collected, we have $11,656 in jury fines collected. New this year is the questionnaire fines. We looked into the law. The law says that we shall charge for people not filling out their questionnaire. So we send out your summons, then we send out a reminder letter to fill out your questionnaire, and then after your service has ended and you still had not filled out your questionnaire, you have a $25 fine, which is reasonable. So we have collected $3,650 with that fine. Any questions on that?
Commissioner Pulaski, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Appreciate it. So I'm thinking about the jurors who were called and who failed to appear. This is a popular topic in my townships. And I'll mention them tonight in my townships. But if I do some rough thinking in my head, that's roughly one-third of the people, a little less than one-third of the people who were summoned failed to appear. And in those cases, you and the judges are holding them to their civic duty by, what, bench warrants or some kind of fines or something like that? Tell me what you guys do.
Yes. So again, I'll explain the process. We send you a summons, the juror summons. We send them a "you have failed to appear" letter. Please contact our office. If you still haven't contacted our office, we then send you a show cause letter saying that we're show causing you to appear in front of the judge for not appearing for jury duty. If you still do not contact our office, we then will issue a bench warrant.
I'll make sure the folks in my townships know about that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or anything else?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
No further questions? Thank you, Sarah. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Next up, the Treasurers' Report. Welcome, Karen.
Good morning, Commissioners. So I had sent out the report last Monday for all two reviews, so wasn't really a whole lot going on. I did update the last two auctions that we had from the foreclosure cycle, but unless there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those, if you have any. All right.
Go ahead, Earl.
Just because every agenda item deserves some commentary, I understand. So we're up a little bit in forfeiture.
Yes.
It's kind of a function of the economy, is it not?
Yes, indeed.
You can almost look at your forfeitures and compare it to some standard economic measure.
Gas prices.
Sorry?
Gas prices.
It almost correlates, huh?
Yes.
How about that? Thank you for addressing them. We have to address them. Thank you for doing so in a professional and compassionate fashion.
I try my best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions for Karen? Do you have more?
I don't.
Okay.
Just Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
Thank you very much, Sam.
Thank you.
You and everybody out there. All in favor of receiving the report indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Next up, item E, Parks. Welcome, Kyle.
Good morning. So this is for the Farmer's Market Project that we received a grant for just a little over a year ago. There's got three different parts of this project. We've got the site work. We've got improvements to the building, and then we've got, soon we'll have a lease for you to consider for someone to operate the farmer's market. So this is just one of those three pieces. This is the site work, basically everything outside of the building. So this is improvements to the driveway, the concrete plaza area that'll serve as a kind of a gathering place and a trailhead, some lighting improvements outside there. But soon after this, in the next month or two, we'll have some bids for the building work itself. And then, like I said, a couple of months from that, we'll have a lease to operate the space. But this is kind of the first step. We did put this out to bid, and we received two bids, and we are recommending a lower bid, so.
Questions? There's no questions. We need to move the bid forward to the full committee? Need a motion and support?
I'll move it, Mr. Chair. If I can get support, I'd like a comment, please.
Go ahead.
Thanks. I think I looked through here reasonably carefully, but want to verify that in this case, the grant is covering all of the county's out-of-pocket costs.
Correct, there's no matching.
And in future, it's anticipated that we'll lease the property to somebody, we'll have some kind of revenue coming in from it, but most importantly, to my point of view, no county funds going out to support such a market. Is that the plan currently?
That's the plan, yes.
Okay, that's really the only reason I would vote for this thing. I've never been much of a fan of it, but so long as it doesn't cost us anything, carry on. So I'm, thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll vote in favor of it based upon my belief that those are the case.
Okay, motion by Pulaski, support by Walls. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Kyle.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Finance. Welcome, Cecilia.
Good morning. So first thing on the agenda that I have is our year-end budget amendment. In our staff report, it does list all the various funds that this budget amendment is covering, and the increases and decreases, for all the funds, there is an increase to the revenue and the expense. Are there any questions anyone has on the budget amendment?
Go ahead, Mr. Pulaski.
Thank you. Sorry to be verbose this morning, Mr. Chair. I want to make sure I understand the general fund aspects of the adjustments. On the first page, revenue from various funds, we have an increase in a use of planned fund balance. What that tells me is that we're going to be reducing the general fund balance by $500,000 for this fiscal year. Is that right, or for the calendar year?
All right, so that...
Don't tell me about the capital fund yet, because I'm going to get to the capital fund.
But it's kind of part of it. So the reason why I have a $500,000, and I'm going to call it a placeholder, okay? Because at year-end, I don't know what the entry is going to be for MMRA prepaid insurance, because that number can go up and it can go down. It could be that I'm reducing expenditures, which has happened over the past couple of years. And if it do, I have money available that way to move over to the capital fund. So therefore, I'm just putting $500 in planned fund balance, so I'm not having to reduce the expenditures that I don't know for sure I'm going to do. But it could be then expenditures may go up, you know, and then therefore, there will not be any, you know, extra money that we'll be able to transfer over to the capital. So at the end of the day, it's a placeholder. I'm not planning on using $500,000 of planned fund balance. I just don't know which direction our insurance entry is going to go regarding prepaid. It's an account, does that make sense?
Absolutely makes sense to me, yes.
Okay.
It gives you a little bit of wiggle room as the fiscal year ends, I guess that, okay?
Yes.
But I think connected to that, and I want to make sure I understand it, is the Public Improvement and Building Fund.
Yes.
Where we're budgeting for a transfer in from the general fund.
Yes.
What that tells me is we got $2.2 million, basically surplus
Yes.
in the general fund.
Yes.
Or that's what we anticipate. That's the number we're putting down here. We anticipate a $2.2 million surplus in the general fund that we're going to transfer then to Public Improvements for whatever we may choose to spend there. Am I interpreting that correctly?
That is exactly correct, yes.
Okay, just want to make sure I understand that. That sounds, that's understandable to me. I think we've done that in the past, but I want to make sure I understand and that other Commissioners understand. That is effectively, we have a surplus in our general fund that we're moving over to spend on capital items in future years.
Yes.
That's all I have, Mr. Chair, and I thank you for the chance to comment.
Thank you for your questions. Any further questions? If not, we need to approve the budget amendments and send them to the full board. So I'll need a motion and support for that. Motion by Pulaski, supported by Snell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Another finance item, this will be your monthly report.
This is, the monthly report would be October 2024. On the first page, it does show the benchmarks, October 24th, so it would be 10/12 of the month. The expenditure would be 83.3% of the benchmark. But as you can see, our year-to-date expenditure total is at 80.3%, which therefore kind of explains where we're at with our year-end budget amendment. Our expenditures are below our benchmark. And then our year-to-date revenue percent totals at 93.7%, and the average is usually about 90.9 at this point in time. So are there any questions on the October financial statements?
Questions, Board? If there are no questions, we need a motion and support to receive. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Cecilia.
Thank you.
Next up is Facilities. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have two ARPA-funded projects that need approval from the Board. The first is the North Lawn Tuck Pointing. We had SME engineering, developed the plan. We had four contractors come in and bid, and we were going to go with the lowest bid from Ram Construction for $48,926.46.
Questions, Board? Yes, sir, go ahead.
If we approve this, is it approved here? It doesn't need to go to the full board, is that right? The dollar amount is... Oh, it still goes full board because it's ARPA? Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We need a motion and support. Send to the full board.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
Motion by Pulaski, supported by Snell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Move on, another facility item, Courthouse.
Yes, thank you. Yep, the next is another ARPA-funded project. It's Courthouse Tuck Pointing. This would be on the north side of the Courthouse Building. Currently, right now, Davenport Construction is working on the south side, and with the remaining ARPA funding, we would like to go ahead and do the north side, and they were the lowest bid at $134,000.
We're doing the north side? We're doing the south side?
Yes.
Does that mean like the east and west are coming up, or are they all taken care of?
Those are still coming up, yes.
Okay. Thank you. We need a motion support to move this project forward. Need to send it to the full board.
Mr. Chair, I'll move it, and then I have a question if I get support.
Yes, sir. Motion by Pulaski, support by Willis. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There was a question, if I recall, during a study session about, I don't know, flashing or something. Was that addressed with the contractor, as you recall?
Yes, sir. Yes, yep. For both projects, there was a question from Commissioner Baer. We reached out to SME, and... We reached out to SME and sent the, we got the responses back, sent them over. The courthouse one was the railing, and that was the removal of the railing, it could be in a safety concern. We reached out, our project manager talked to Davenport, and they're going to leave the railing in, on-site, and go ahead and do the repairs right there on-site, instead of removing it, bringing it back. So there's no safety concerns. The tuck pointing at the north lawn, that was some stuff that was brought up as far as the flashing in water, as far as getting in there. And they're currently, they totally understand, they gave a response back, and then they're going to go ahead and work through that process to make sure that it's properly taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, as a noncommittee member to the opportunity to speak. So I just have just one question regards to a comment you made. You mentioned that, I think it was the east and west side were upcoming?
Yes.
Okay, so will we have enough ARPA funding to take care of that before the deadline?
No.
We will, you said not?
No, no, everything that's going to, ARPA funding will be committed this month. That'll be going back to capital funds.
Okay.
We have a big capital need.
Okay. Nothing further, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any further questions? We'll proceed to voting. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Move on to item J. G2G Credit Card Payment Service Renewal.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So what I have for you today is the renewal of the G2G service agreement with Oakland County. What that agreement does for us is it allows us to leverage Oakland's credit card payment system. They have an online credit card payment system they developed. They maintain the security on it. They maintain all of the software behind it. And so all that we have on our end is the actual card swipes or the ability for departments to have online payments done instead. And we have a variety of departments that have been using that successfully for the past five years. And this is just a renewal of that agreement moving forward. There were no major changes or any other term changes to it other than a few definition items regarding IT support and security, but nothing that impacts the actual agreement terms.
Questions? Commissioner Snell? Okay, we have approval by Snell, support by Walls. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same. Passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
GIS, you're handling...
So the other item is the flyover update for our aerial imagery. This is done typically over the history of us doing it here, approximately every four to five years, depending on the needs and the conditions. Imagery was taken in 2011, 2015, 2020, and so we are aiming to get it done in the spring leaf-off conditions in 2025. We looked at a few different options, had conversation with the Equalization Department as one of the users of it to determine if we wanted to look at what was done in comparison to the 2020 imagery. We're going to get the same overhead imagery, and here it's referred to as orthogonal imagery in a few locations in the documents. That just means the, what you think of when you look at like a Google map or something like that, that kind of top-down aerial imagery. It's the same resolution as what we have today on our parcel maps and our other GIS products that are out there. The only change from what was done last time is we are not getting the oblique imagery, which is something that only the townships and county staff had access to. And it was the ability to look at properties from a 45-degree angle from all four directions. It almost tripled the cost, in some cases, depending on the vendor we were looking at. And talking to some of the stakeholders, it was determined there was not a need for that during this flyover, which is consistent with what we've done in the past, updating that about every other flyover.
I'd like to ask, what is the total cost? I see two different costs listed. The second pull-up, it says $108,467.
Yes.
And then on the final one, it says three-year total, $130,725. That'd be on the summary, your third, the last page.
Oh, that is in one of the proposals that was offered. That is not the proposal that we are recommending. That was just provided as one of the proposals that we saw. Yeah, that, one of the, typically, historically, what we would do is go out, contract somebody to fly the route, and then piece together the imagery, get it together, and then get it back to us. And we would own that imagery. One of the proposals that we looked at this time around was a subscription service, where they would go out, they provide the imagery, they own the imagery, and they give us the right to use that imagery while we pay the subscription. We took a look at that, since it was competitive in the ballpark on it, and it does provide some benefits, like getting access to more updated imagery over time without having to go and re-contract it every few years, but the cost was higher. And it also, not owning the imagery, limited us in a couple of directions in terms of how we utilize it with some of our other systems.
Okay. I was confused.
Yeah.
Discussion, motions? We're asked to provide $108,467.76 to, for aerial imaging, a buy-up agreement?
I'll move the staff recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Motion by Pulaski, support by Snell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, we're, all, this is a policy, purchase policy update. Who's going to...
Good morning, Commissioners, I'll take this one. As we do, we continually review our policies. This is the purchasing policy that we are reviewing. There was some confusion on one paragraph within the policy, so we are eliminating that. We've sent this out, of course, as we always do, to all the offices and departments of the county for review. We did not receive any feedback that it would harm anybody by removing this paragraph, so we are recommending its removal.
Okay. Discussion at all?
I'll support that.
Okay, pull it, right you... Okay. Motion made by Snell, supported by Pulaski. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, passed unanimously, thank you. We have item M, policy nepotism.
Again, in continually reviewing our policies, this one was brought to our attention that there needed some cleanup, so there's some cleanup language in there as well as some clarification. It eliminated, the previous language eliminated some extended family relationships, such as cousins. So we are cleaning up the language so that it's clear that it would be any blood relative as far as our nepotism policy that would apply. So we're just doing some cleanup to make sure that it's clear what it does include.
Questions? Commissioner Pulaski?
Thanks, I'll move the adoption of the staff recommendation, and I do have a question if I can achieve support, thank you.
Go ahead.
So, thank you for the cleanup. I guess the question I would ask is whether this amendment would cause any employees to fall out of compliance with our policy if we adopt it? Are we aware of anybody who would, who would now be considered to be close enough, represent a relationship, to be problematic?
So yes, sometimes that does happen when a policy is brought to our attention that it doesn't cover something. And this is one of those situations where we do have a cousin relationship, someone is supervising their cousin. I haven't been involved with HR to know how it's anticipated to be handled. But yes, that is a circumstance existing right now. A supervisory relationship. I don't see Michael here either. I can get back with you on that.
Darius?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So would it be possible, and I don't know the background to this particular case that we're referring to, but is it possible that this could be adopted? Or once the Board approves, it would just be on that date moving forward and not anything in the marriage?
My grandfather did.
Yeah, grandfather, better term, thank you.
Yes. Deb, will this cause somebody to lose a job, or if this is...
We generally wouldn't terminate. We would see if there's options available, I believe, in best-case scenario to transfer somebody or find an equivalent job in a different area. So we generally wouldn't terminate unless there's extenuating circumstances like a marriage or, you know, something like that, that we wouldn't generally terminate as a result of this. We would try and find other options for the individual.
All right.
But it would be at the will of the Board of Commissioners. So if you want that language in there, that's fine, too.
Commissioner Wallace?
Deb, just one, I'm sorry, I have one question in particular. I'm sorry, I have one question in particular. The one part, it seems kind of vague to me, but I may not be understanding it correctly. Says the definition also extends to members of the employee's household as well as anyone with whom the employee has a close personal relationship?
So that would be, sometimes you would be in a dating relationship and may not be living together?
Okay.
Or something similar of that.
So of a dating-type relationship then, not just, okay, so not like a close friend, but just...
No, generally it would be a dating relationship is what we generally look for in that.
Okay, because it says a close personal relationship refers to any relationship romantic or otherwise? Okay.
So...
I'm sorry, just trying to make sure I clearly understand what that is.
I can't think of any other close relation, close personal relationship that that would apply to. I don't, Mike, did you have any?
Well, yeah, I think it's broad there in the sense because there are circumstances which, you know, just because you can't put your finger on it, doesn't mean it's not the case. I mean, any, what you're trying to avoid here is any relation, reporting relationship, where there is cause for this person to either treat someone differently or give them, you know, advantages and things like that, that they would not give to someone else. If there's that kind of relationship existing, it really shouldn't. And it leads to, well, it leads to lots of problems, potential lawsuits even. So we try to avoid those situations, is really what it comes down to.
Okay.
We're talking about reporting to the other side of the relationship, not working at the county. I mean, working at the county doesn't count. If I work at road commission and you work in IT...
No, that's very different, yeah.
Yeah, okay. It's just one...
It's reporting, you know? I, yeah, you wouldn't want to be supervising someone who you're very close to. It creates sometimes poor judgment.
Yes, we do, for clarification, we do have existing relationships where there's a husband and wife, perhaps, in two different offices. Those types of relationships are okay. It's the supervisory relationship that we're focusing on.
Thank you, thank you, good question, Mr. Wallace. Okay, any other questions on this? If not, we are requested to move this forward to the full Board, so for next meeting. Need a motion and support? Okay, we do have a motion and support. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. We'll go down next to item N, fee schedules proposed for 2025.
As we do annually, this is attached with our budget review, so we try to bring the fee schedule with the budget every year. We've been doing this for several years now, six or seven, maybe before that, I don't know. But anyways, so the fees that are proposed to be changed are highlighted in yellow. All the other fees have been reviewed. We send this out again to all the offices, the department heads and elected officials of the county. They have an opportunity, I think they've had two months to review this and get back with me to compile the final changes. So the fees that are not in yellow are not proposing to be changed, they're existing fees. The yellow ones are proposed to be changed. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those. Again, these would be effective with the new budget, so it would be January 1st of 2025.
Any questions, Board? If there are no questions, we need to move this forward to the full Board for recommendation. Can I have a motion and support? Motion by Walls, supported by Snell. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. We'll move on to item O. Basically, it's information only. Need a motion and support to receive? Okay, move by Pulaski, supported by Walls. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, the same. Motion passes, thank you. We'll move down to item five, the claims. Need a motion and support to pay the claims? Okay, we have a motion and support. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Passes unanimously. No other minutes. Reporting schedule for next month is finance, IT semi-annual, parks semi-annual. And we'll move down now to second round of public comment. Any public comment? Thank you, Board, no comments today. Committee member comments? Go ahead, Mr. Pulaski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to comment. I see we had an application today from another person interested in the materials management area. And although we didn't act on that person, he seems to have a background that would be worthy of consideration. I might suggest that we perhaps take up his application and appointments at the full Board meeting. Mr. Gorky, Dan Gorky? He was stable to Andrew Grimes, yes.
Yes, okay.
So I, simply a reminder, I guess, of, you know, not that it undoes what we did today, but seems to me perhaps another at-large potential for the materials management plan. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Question for Mike, could we do that at the Tuesday night meeting?
Sure.
Okay. We'll do that Tuesday night. Any other committee member comments? Thank you all, thank you, Margie, for being down there and seeing you. Meeting adjourned.